Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the City Council today, July the 9th. And the City Council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551-072 of the Texas Government Code. With that, we will now go into executive session. Okay, at this time, the City Council will reconvene in City Council chambers for our work session, and at this time, we'll have more consideration on the topic, and Jared, I'm gonna let you introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, City Council. We have with us today a special guest, Dr. John Kelly, Texas Veterans Land Board. This is your gentleman that leads the entirety of the state efforts for our veteran cemetery that's being constructed. Dr. Kelly's gonna take y'all kind of through an update, and maybe answer a few questions if you have them. John?
Thanks very much, Jared. Council members, new council members, congratulations. City managers, city staff, and citizens of Lubbock, I bring you greetings from Austin. My name is Dr. John Kelly. I'm the Director of the Texas State Veteran Cemetery Program, and my purpose today is to give you a short update on where we are with that great project out on 50th Street. So, a bit of information for you. We had to go out through statewide bidding to find a construction company to actually build it. We did that, completed that work around the end of September last year, and then we gave that contractor official notice to proceed the contract on the 20th of November, and it has a contractual finish date of exactly two years later, so that'll be 19 November of 2025. Following that contractual finish date, there will be a short period of inspection and acceptance, and then we'll be able to open the cemetery for operations. You don't see this very often at the state or federal level. I'm very happy to report, we are on schedule and we are on budget, and it is my intention that we stay that way for the entire project. I do want to point out some organizations we've been working very closely with. Of course, the city of Lubbock comes to mind first. Jared, in particular, Wood Franklin, from your Director of Public Works, Brooke Witcher, Assistant City Manager, are all folks that we've been working with, as well as quite a number of staff. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure to work with them. They're really supportive of this project. I have zero complaints, and it's been really smooth, very pleasant process to deal with them. Likewise, we've been working with Lubbock County, in particular Judge Parrish, and his wonderful staff with the same sort of cooperative spirit with them as well. It's really been fulfilling and rewarding. We've worked with South Plains Electrical for electric supply to the cemetery. That'll be coming online very shortly. 101 K Gas Company, because there's a gas line that runs across the property, and we've had to deal with easement issues and those kinds of things. That's been working out very well as well. Currently working with TexDOT, because for those of you that go out to East 50th Street periodically, you know, you crest a hill and you're kind of there. And it was very kind of the city to lower the speed limit to 55 from the previous 65, but we all know culturally, people will still drive 65-plus in that area, and so it poses a bit of a safety concern, frankly. So, at the future front gate of the cemetery, we're working with TexDOT to put a deceleration lane in so that funeral processions will be able to go into that deceleration lane, get off the road, and that's really about safety more than it is anything else. So, we're working with them on that. TCEQ, we're working with on the Type 2 irrigation water supply that will be connecting and purchasing irrigation water from the city, but we've got to have an agreement, and TCEQ's always got involvement in that. And then finally, our great partners at the National Cemetery Administration, they're the ones that gave us the grant to establish the cemetery to begin with. I do want to update. At this point, when I wrote this out to send to you last week, we had 641 pre-registrations. We now have 658 pre-registrations for a cemetery that doesn't exist yet and will not exist for another year and a half. And I think that's significant because it tells you the public's interest and your veterans and their families' interest in this cemetery. That's a pretty big number. And of course, the vast majority of those are coming here from Lubbock, but they're also coming from surrounding counties. I was very frankly surprised when we recently did an analysis of where these people are from statewide. There's three people in Harris County, where Houston is, that have registered to be buried here in Lubbock. And so I think that's a pretty strong statement about the community here. A principle that we have woven throughout this project is we always want to buy American. In fact, we have to buy American. There is a federal law that mandates that. But within that context, we want to spend our money in Texas, and so we want to buy Texan. And within that context, the final goal is to buy local wherever we can. And I'm gonna show you a list of local vendors that are subcontractors on this project shortly. So, we wanted the community to embrace this cemetery as truly their own. They started that process when they chose the name, West Texas State Veteran Cemetery. That was chosen by your community here, specifically the veterans groups in your community. But we wanted to integrate in as much of West Texas and Lubbock culture as we could appropriate for the grounds of a cemetery. And so, that really begs the question, what is Lubbock and West Texas culture? That's an open question for you all if you want to think about that. The answers we came up with, very first and foremost, Texas Tech. That is a very big part of Lubbock culture and West Texas culture. So, how could we integrate that into the cemetery? Well, if you didn't know it, Texas Tech actually has its own brick pattern. The types and the shading of the bricks is unique to Texas Tech. We are integrating that brick pattern into the brick on our admin building, our committal shelter, and our column burial walls. You also know, what color are the roofs out at Texas Tech? Well, that's the color roof we're gonna be putting on our admin building and our committal shelters as well. Yes, we're gonna have red roof. And then all of the flatwork colors. Flatwork means anything by virtue of the name that's flat, sidewalks, those kind of things. We're gonna be integrating in Texas Tech coloration into that flatwork, both at the center star as well as at the committal shelter. But there's another piece of West Texas culture that maybe you don't think of it because you're from here, but those of us that aren't from here, when we think of West Texas, we think of cattle drives and cowboys and horses. So, we came up with a bit of a unique approach on the fencing. It's gonna be a three horizontal slat fence, and it looks all the world like something you'd ride up to on your horse, get off, and tie it onto. It's actually in play now or in position at a cemetery in Arkansas. It's gorgeous. We think it's gonna be gorgeous here as well, and very appropriate for the purpose of fencing around a state veteran cemetery. So, that's what we've done to try to integrate in your culture. And the idea there is, you know, everybody can't even embrace it as your state veteran cemetery. There's an artist conception, a rendering of what the column burial walls and that brick pattern you see is the Texas Tech brick pattern. And there's a rendition of what the administration building is gonna look like with the red roof and the brick pattern there as well. Bit of additional information, so although the project doesn't complete until November 2025, we want to do what's called partial acceptance of the administration building and the maintenance building. And the reason for that is, I need to order a bunch of office furnishings and heavy equipment, and I need a place to store it and start getting offices up and functional, because the next thing we need to do is start hiring personnel so we can train personnel. I don't think you want the cemetery to be completed and then wait another six to eight months to do the hiring and the training of the personnel. I want to do these things coincident with each other in parallel, so that when we get to the end of 2025, we finish the project, we're ready to open, and we're ready for business. So, we need to take those two buildings a bit earlier, and the construction companies agreed to do that. We're also beginning working with the city manager and Assistant City Manager Brooke Witcher towards a contract to be in place by the 1st of November. That contract will include the provision of the staff and the daily operating supplies for the cemetery. And the way this will work is Jared and his staff will put together a budget. Here's what it costs for the people, including fringe benefits, all of that, health insurance, all those kind of things, and all the indirect costs, supplies, all those other costs. And they'll turn that into a budget. It'll be given to me. We will take and slice it into 12 equal payments. We will make monthly payments to the city of Lubbock. The idea is, it doesn't cost Lubbock taxpayers one cent to operate this cemetery. We are hiring you, the city, to run that cemetery. Now, I will always maintain one state employee on site. I'll mention his name in just a few minutes, but his primary purpose is going to be ensure that the standards are maintained. So, even though those will be Lubbock employees, the standards that are applied out there are actually National Cemetery Administration standards. And we get inspected on those standards formally every three years. And so, that's the primary purpose of my on-site representative, is going to be to ensure that those standards are being upheld. So, we gave you this back in August of last year. So, this was our promise to you of what we were gonna deliver. And it's that dark shaded, the light shaded green part is for future expansions. The dark shaded green part is what we aim to build now. So, that's what we're building right now. This is a drone view from about a little over a month ago. Put those side by side for you. So, compare them now, if you will. Take a second. What you should start to see is that they're actually identical. And the reason I wanted to share that with you is because the left side represents what we promised you. The right side represents what we're delivering to you. Do you have some special things to make? First of all, Emerson Construction Company and Bayes Engineering, those are the companies we, the state, hired. Emerson is the lead construction company out there on the ground. If you've been out there and you've seen the construction trailer, that's who's in there. Bayes Engineering is our engineering outfit. They also do quality control over the construction company. And then about the next seven or so companies, do they sound familiar to you? Well, they should. They're all Lubbock companies. Remember when I said, buy American, buy Texan, buy local? So, those are all subcontractors to our construction company doing various pieces of work associated with building the cemetery. The second-to-last one is relatively new. That's the Friends of the West Texas State Veteran Cemetery. That's their support fund. That's a newly established 501(c)(3) that was established for the purpose of fundraising to support the cemetery. They're actually doing fundraising right now for the bell tower. We cannot purchase the bell tower with the VA grant. We have to purchase that independently. The 501(c)(3) has agreed to do the fundraising to provide the bell tower. We can build the bell tower base. We're building that with the grant. We just can't actually build the tower itself. And then finally, some of you probably know Norm Bearden. He is my on-site representative here at the West Texas State Veteran Cemetery. There's not a lot for him to do out the cemetery at the moment because it's being built, but Norm is doing a great job with engaging with your community. When I briefed you that there were 658 pre-registrations, Norm is the biggest reason why there are 658 pre-registrations. He's out there telling the story every day. I know at least two times a week, he's at the VA clinic, sitting there at a registration desk, helping people pre-register for the cemetery. And then he's out there addressing various veterans groups. I know he's on the City Council Veterans Advisory Group and very much engaged in trying to provide service to our veterans and their families. And I thank him as his boss for doing what he does out here. And with that, I'd be happy to take any of your questions, although, and I must apologize a little bit for not being in a suit today. I'm actually coming straight from the cemetery, where we had a little barbecue for various members of the veterans communities. We had about 15, 18 people out, and we took them on personal guided tours using a UTV out there. It's hard to imagine, and I know you have this difficulty as well. You drive by, it's hard to tell what's going on. So, this was our chance to drive around so they could actually see what's going on, because it's all kind of flatwork right now. And you can see it in the drone view, but it's hard to visualize. And so, driving around out there today and answering their questions was just a wonderful experience. We got to break bread together, and I think it was a very successful event. And I literally got in the truck and drove straight here. So, I do want to thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Dr. Kelly, thank you so much. We take so much pride in what is to come, in this vision, and soon-to-be-reality is something that all Lubbockites, I think, will be very proud of. But at this time, I think we have Dr. Wilson.
Dr. Kelly, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to also echo that. Thank you so much for being out here and, you know, serving our veteran community and making sure that this project comes to fruition. And I mean, just the drone view already, you're definitely delivering on what you said you would. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Glassheen, who is a veteran, by the way.
Mr. Dr. Kelly, just wanted to say thank you also, and also Mr. Bearden. The work of everybody on your team really shows. And also, I want to say thank you to the city staff that's helped to support this project as well.
Absolutely. And as you heard me say earlier, I thank them as well. It's been a pleasure to work with them, really. And I would be, I am a little bit remiss, but I'm quite proud of the fact, my OSR here, and my OSRs at the other four cemeteries, and my executive assistant, we are 100% veteran team. So, Norm is US Navy retired, and Ashley Tucker, my executive assistant, is a former Marine. She doesn't like me to say former. She just likes me to say Marine, so.
If we can get them to stand up, please. Thank you.
Thank you for that. They're great people. I have the best team in the planet.
Well, thank you again so much, and we appreciate you. We hope that you'll stay for the ceremonial part as we honor our country. So, with that, we are going to go ahead and continue to open session, and we will start with an invocation by Pastor Jeff McRite, and he is with Rock City Church. And I know I saw him just a minute ago. He might still be out. And meanwhile, while we're waiting, I do want to recognize that we have some office interns, and this is something that is very new to the city of Lubbock. So, if y'all will stand up. Isn't that wonderful? And this is a part of something new. Y'all can sit down. Thank you so much. Something new that we're doing here at the city, working to prepare the future workforce. So, thank you for being a part of that. And there is Pastor McRite. As I mentioned, Pastor McRite is with Rock City Church. And if you've never heard this man sing, oh my God, literally, when he sings, it's like, oh my God. But if you want to go ahead and approach the podium, everyone will stand, please.
Our Father and our God, we approach your throne today on behalf of our city and our city council. I thank you for the blessing of Lubbock, Texas. There are no perfect cities, but Lubbock is a great city, and we thank you for that. To have a great city, great leadership is required, and so we thank you for our city council and the entire team that is part of our city's leadership. You are the all-knowing God. You are omniscient. And so, we ask you for incredible guidance for the council this afternoon. Give them great wisdom concerning each and every item on the agenda. The Bible says that there are ways that seem right to us in the short run, but in the end, those things don't turn out as we wished. So, we don't ask you for decisions that are only right for the immediate time. We pray for decisions to be made during this meeting that will be right for the long term of Lubbock, Texas. May every move made by our council today be positive and progressive so that Lubbock, Texas, will continue to be this great city. We pray a blessing upon every family and individual in Lubbock, and for those individuals who are suffering the most, we pray that they would be first in line to receive help and relief. Thank you for your love for us and help us to show your kind of love to everyone we meet from day to day. Bless our mayor and city council members and their families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, our councilwoman, Dr. Jennifer Wilson, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, if you'll maintain it and join me, the Pledge is the United States of Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
As you can see, our mayor, I'm the mayor protem. I'm already taking over Mark's job, but Mark is away, and he will be back for our next meeting. At this time, we will now begin with our citizen comments. And according to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before meeting of the City Council regarding any matter posted on our agenda shall complete the sign-up form providing the meeting no later than 2:00, and that has happened. We now have a few folks, and I just want to remind you that you will have three minutes, and you will get a warning bell. Jimmy, can we hear that bell? There you go. And that'll happen 30 seconds before your time is up. So, with that, let's go ahead and get started. And we now ask Colby Norris to come make sure that you provide your address, your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Colby Norris, and I live at 16001 County Road 1860, and I am the 2024 Treasurer for the Highland Oaks HOA. I'm here to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7.4, the annexation of Highland Oaks. I'd ask if you're sitting in the audience and are in favor of the annexation, will you please stand? Thank you. Our neighborhood was established 20 years ago. Back then, it was actually a decent drive out of town. Once you crossed 114th Street, you're outside of the city limits. At the time of the development, it was not feasible to supply city utilities to the neighborhood, so our residents have relied solely on well water. Since that time, Lubbock has expanded and now shares boundaries with our neighborhood. Not long after the development, residents started to notice declining production from their wells. As the water table has dropped, the issues have become more widespread and more severe. It is our goal to be voluntarily annexed by the city of Lubbock to ensure a sustainable water supply for our neighborhood. It has been a journey. We began discussions with the city in 2022. We appreciate the time, resources that the city and the council have dedicated to the process to get us here in front of you today. In 2019, Texas passed House Bill 347, which eliminated forced annexation. So, this has been a first and a learning experience for all of us. We've put together a plan to install the infrastructure at no cost to the city. When we collected petitions from our residents to determine the appetite for annexation, 71% of our total residents were in favor, and of those that participated, 83% were in favor. Property insurance has increased exponentially in recent years. Access to fire hydrants and emergency services would make the neighborhood a safer place. It would also reduce our risk level with insurance providers. Recently, we've had residents experiencing difficulty locating providers that are willing to cover their homes. Typically, a home is the largest investment that one will make in their lifetime. We want to protect the value of that investment by ensuring long-term access to water. Thank you for your help. We look forward to working with our mayor, our city councilmen and women, our city management and staff. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call upon Christopher Walker.
Hello, members of the City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm Chris Walker. My address is 4610 Avenue C. I'm in Mr. Harris's district. I wanted to talk about Item 7.5 on the Sewer Committee, the Ad Hoc Committee. I just want to talk about how important it is to Lubbock residents that we have an up-to-date functioning sewer system. I went to one of the committee meetings, and some of the concerns that were expressed there were about the lack of funding, the lack of equipment, the lack of ability to keep on workers. And I would just ask that you think about the people that are working for you, make sure that you're keeping that department funded. Also, think of the people that will be affected by this legislation. There are a lot of people that can't afford catastrophic sewer repairs, and we need to make sure that whatever the plan is, whether that's, you know, the city takes responsibility for it, or there's some kind of voucher program, just make sure there's some kind of program in place to take care of people that can't afford to fix these catastrophic damages. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. At this time, I'd like to ask Adam Hernandez to approach, and he's going to be making his presentation.
Hello, Adam Hernandez. I live at 6966 26th Street here in Lubbock, Texas. I'm also the Communications Chair on the Board of Lubbock Compact. So, I'm also here to speak to Agenda Item 7.5, and I would just like to echo the sentiments of the previous speaker. We have, right at about half of our city's population just simply cannot afford one of these repairs. It's not that they don't want to or that they prefer not to. They simply cannot. And that's just the hard data of the situation. On top of just individual homeowners who might be living in a property, we also have a lot of property management companies and investors who have multiple properties in these older neighborhoods. And so, when I look at the situation and sort of everything that we've been told by the council and the committee, is that the bulk, the lion's share of these repairs have been the orangeberg. And we know that we have the orangeberg. We know that it's not an unlimited amount of orangeberg in the city. And so, this wouldn't even really be an initiative that would need to be prolonged for like a really long amount of time. But I think that a good approach would be for the council to eventually develop a plan to help with this expense and not put it on the property owners. And I understand the arguments of people not wanting to pay for somebody else's thing, but we do this all the time. We do it with trash services, with water services. Another funding mechanism that could be possibly looked at for this going forward would be, currently, we have no wastewater impact fees. Now, obviously, impact fees have to be spent in the area where they're collected, but that also frees up revenue to fix things in other areas. So, this is one potential thing that could be looked at. Maybe there's some other sort of moving around that can be done to cover the cost of the $800,000 or whatever it is per year for the city, because the city can afford this, and a lot of our citizens simply cannot. And so, that's what we're presenting to you all. I hope that when you reach your final decision, that this cost is not shared by the property owners whatsoever. Last thing I'll say is, I do think that a solution involving our local plumbers is really good in trying to ease that workload for the city. And so, whatever could be figured out there, we are totally in favor of that. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. At this time, we'll go ahead and move in accepting the minutes from May 21st, 2024, with a special City Council meeting of the Electric Utility Board, as well as June 11th, 2024, in the regular City Council meeting. May I have a motion? A motion by Councilman David Glassheen may have a second. Second by Dr. Jennifer Wilson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six to zero. The council will now take up the consent agenda. The consent agenda is Items 6.1 through 6.28. The following items have been pulled from the agenda, 6.8, and the city manager will provide a brief summary of the pulled items. Are there any, go ahead, Jared. I'm sorry about that. I'm getting ahead of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, if I might, we'll have a presentation ready, or we'll have someone ready to answer questions on Item 6.8. Mr. John Osborne is here. An item that I bring to your attention, and counsel, this is related to a prior discussion today. Item 6.23 is the second reading of a zone case in District 1. That was postponed to date certain, date certain being today. The background of that item is still pending. As you're aware, the applicant has asked if you would consider to postpone it date certain to August the 13th. If so, we'll pull that completely from the consent agenda and allow you to consider it separately, but that certainly is your call. And ma'am, if you'd like, we'll go into Item 6.8?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I'll start, and with your permission, I'm gonna ask Mr. Osborne to start making his way up here. Let me talk a little bit about the background of Item 6.8 and what it is. The item itself, the budget amendment, is a true-up. So, prior to this current budget year, when the City Council allocated hotel occupancy tax, or hot tax, when you allocated that to guarantees, Market Lubbock being one of the major ones for that, you're in effect allocating a percentage of the revenue that would come in through the hot tax. Thus, at the close of a year, if the collections were greater than that, those amounts over what were initially sent out came back to you at different points through what were initially sent out came back to you at different points throughout the year, here's one today, for a true-up. So the percentage that was over divided by the percentage that was assigned moves additional money to those grantees. That's what this item is here. Counsel, I think it's important to note, city council in last August and September, when the current year's budget was adopted, the practice of allocating on a percentage basis was stopped, and the council did two things. One, each of the grantees submitted to you an operating budget, reviewed in your open session, discussed, debated, ultimately awarded, awarded as a dollar amount. Thus, going forward, so once this year works its way out, going forward, any additional hot tax revenues over the projected hot tax budget, those now go into a hot tax reserve fund. That reserve fund captures and holds those dollars, and the use of those dollars is one hundred percent purview of the city council for any hot tax eligible expense. There is a, there's a bracket in which they can be spent. They can be spent on eligible projects. It could be to provide additional funds to one of your grantees if they come to you with a particular project or proposal that you choose to fund. So you have this one. I think we'll have potentially two more that kind of wrap up what was done a year ago, and you won't see the true-ups going forwards. This one particularly goes to Market Lubbock, which also is the holder of Visit Lubbock, Lubbock Sports Authority. Mr. John Osborne is your CEO and Executive Director of that, and he's available to ask question, or to answer any questions you may have.
Hi, John.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Are there any questions? Not? Oh, sorry, Dr. Jennifer Wilson?
Mr. Atkinson, this question's for you, and I may have missed it. Did we, what is the amount that we are over, our percent over this year for our hot tax? The actual dollar amount, do we know where we're at? What's in the reserve?
I've been shown that number within the last three weeks, and I don't recall. Is Ms. Brock here today?
Okay.
And does she have her magic computer with her?
No, she doesn't.
The keeper of all knowledge.
Sorry, Ms. Brock, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Basically, we do, we're fairly certain even this year that our taxes, our hotel tax is going over budget. Last year, I'm trying to think, I want to say it was like six five?
That was the total, but we've got a minus. Councilmember, if you don't mind, we will get those exact numbers. You're going to have two of them, where we stand for this year, current year to date, and then what was done a year before. We will email those to the council.
Yeah, we will. Sorry.
My apologies not having that.
That's okay, thank you.
Councilman Gleschin?
Mr. Osborne, do you have a presentation or anything that you'd like to present to us on the breakdown of your proposed budget?
I don't know if it's in your backup or not, but we submitted a budget with some explanation, and I can go through that explanation if you'd like.
The materials that were submitted in the backup to the agenda were very high-level summaries, so it didn't provide any specificity. And we received some additional information shortly before the meeting began, but I know that I skimmed it, the other council members, and may not have had the opportunity to review that detail, so I think it'd be helpful.
Sure, absolutely. So obviously, the revenue number that comes to us is a number that the city staff provides to us, and that, that is the true-up dollar that comes in. On our professional services, we have shifted one of the roles of one of our current staff members, and that's created a vacancy in our Director of Sales position. And so this professional service is to help us with hiring a search firm to find someone that's qualified to be a Director of Sales for us. And then there's also some potential that we may have a lady that retires from us during this budget year, and if so, we potentially might do a search firm for the CFO position as well. And so we've just got those two items budgeted in that line item. Under the convention in sports sales, this is related primarily to a big event over in England and in Europe where there is, we get a lot of visitors that come in primarily because of Buddy Holly, and his, he was such an influence in the music industry over in that area. And so many of our acts actually go over to England and to Europe, and Flatland Cavalry is originally from Lubbock, and they are actually performing at a concert, a series of concerts that are over there. And so we have a group that helps us recruit new tours to the Lubbock area front, that is stationed over there that we contract with, and this is to work with them to do a big promotion related to those, to Flatland Cavalry being over in that area. And so it's kind of all associated with it. We won't be traveling over for that. It will be utilizing that team that's over there to help do this promotion. In our marketing area, we've got a number of different contracts that we're looking at. One is with ITI Digital. It's a two-year contract with some technology software. Forgive me for reading this, because this is a little beyond my, my ability to remember all this. But it's basically to pull in data from events and business listings to help maintain our websites. Previously, when a new restaurant opened up, we would actually have to input all that into, onto the Visit Lubbock website as a potential place to go and visit. And this is some software that we can actually utilize on our website that actually pulls not just the business listings, but actually also events that are taking place. So if something were to be held at, say, Buddy Holly Hall, or if we were to do a big tournament that was here, that, that, all those events would be looked at by our team, but it would, all the data would be pulled in, and all we have to do is approve those to go onto the website. It's going to actually make our lives much easier for being able to populate the, the information on our website. There's a contract, and that one is for twenty-one thousand. CrowdRiff is another one contract. It's a one-year license to, for a visual content marketing software, for content sharing and sourcing for user-generated materials. It's about twenty-two thousand dollars. We've got some pocket guides that we're doing. We have recently switched from having an actual visitor guide to being all digital. And one challenge that we've run into is that the state-run visitor centers don't have something to hand out about Lubbock, and so we're developing a much simpler, easier-to-print. We can do it locally here, and we were starting to have trouble sourcing paper for a visitor guide, and this is actually a much simpler type of guide that we can then have in those state visitor centers and any other places that, that need visitor guides. That one is in the neighborhood of about twenty-one thousand. And then there's an ad buy for about twenty-five thousand that is with Dave Campbell's Texas Football. This is an, it's a new opportunity that we've run into. It's to really showcase our destination as a place for sports-related events to be here, and to try to highlight to the football world that this is a great place to host their events here and all. So those are kind of the main, main ones that, that are making up the hundred thousand in that line item. On the sports servicing side of things, we've got, we've been given our preliminary numbers for next year. It, right now, looks to be a flat budget in terms of the revenue numbers for Visit Lubbock. As a result, we know that we've got more events coming next year that need some dollars, and we'd like to use some of the true-up dollars that we're getting this year to kind of prepay the incentive that are required for them to come ahead of time. And so some of those events are, like men's bowling, it's about forty thousand dollars. Texas Premier Baseball is another ten thousand. Texas Cornhole, this is a statewide cornhole competition, twenty-five thousand, and USA Boxing continues to hold more and more events here because of the hospitality that they get. That's a fifty thousand dollar prepay. And so those are some, some of the main ones in that, in that line item. And then on our tourism capital projects, we had just a little bit more money left over, and we've got a couple of projects that we've been looking at, but not, have not yet decided whether to move forward with or not. One is potentially to have a visitor center in the downtown, possibly even kind of around, centered around the downtown park that is potentially going to go in. We started to get information about it, but we have not yet moved, decided to move forward with either trying to lease some space for a visitor center or try to own some space of, of some sort. And then we have one other tourism capital project, and that is, we've been working very closely with the Parks and Rec Department and their Director, Colby, about potentially helping to redo the ball fields at the Tom Martin Complex on fifteen eighty-five in Milwaukee. And so we've placed the, the final hundred and fifty thousand in that line item to just help if we decide to move forward with that project. If we don't spend those dollars, then those dollars will be available for us to use in the next budget year, and so we're, we're not just trying to spend it for the sake of spending it. It's much more for us to enable us on some potential opportunities. But if, if by chance we don't move forward with the tourism capital project this year, it'll just remain in place for this next year.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
Are there any other questions or input? Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, John, thank you for being here. I know it's always a challenge when you're in lead ed market Lubbock, because y'all function on a lot of possibles and possibilities and what we might can do and what might happen in the future. So it makes it hard for people to see
Yes, ma'am.
Precise, precise numbers and where they're going and shifting. So I think my question is, is if you didn't receive, because this total number, correct me wrong, looks around five hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not a hundred percent sure what sits in our hot tax reserve. If you didn't receive the five hundred and eighty-four thousand to kind of trip on these projects, would it put the Market Lubbock budget at a deficit for this year? I mean, we have a new budget year coming up, which will start October one.
So, so these dollars actually don't affect our Market Lubbock budget at all? They only affect the Visit Lubbock budget?
I'm sorry, Visit Lubbock.
That's okay.
I apologize.
No, no, no. Just to clarify, it won't have any effect on it or lead to either one. It would affect the Visit Lubbock budget. These are dollars that we've actually already received, and so we received them, I think, in November, December, Cheryl, do you remember? I think it was about November or December. And one reason that we kind of waited to bring forward a new proposed budget was because we were waiting to see how some things shook out, to see what the priorities would end up being. A lot of our, especially a lot of our sporting events are planning kind of a one to, say, three years out, whereas our conventions are planning more like three to, say, eight years out for when, when they're going to hold their events. And, and then from a marketing perspective, sometimes the downturn in the economy can make things a little more easy to, to go after and get some, get some things and, and kind of place some ads that are real convenient for, for what we need, but yet also don't cost nearly as much. And so once we started to realize, okay, this is kind of how this is starting to shake out and where we think these dollars are going to be necessary, we've started to put them on those line items, then brought that before our board, and then that, as a result of that change in revenue, that meant that we needed to bring that before you all.
Okay. So just for clarification, so everybody understands, I've already received the, the funding.
Yes, ma'am.
This is more you guys bringing itemized budget revision, just so you know, potentially where the money's going to be spent?
Yes, and as
This isn't, this isn't Visit Lubbock asking for additional funds?
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
In the future, it would require us to come ask. In the, in the previous, at least fifteen years, I'm sure probably twenty at least, it was done differently, where we just received the automatic percentage that the council budgeted for us, and as a result, they did a true-up kind of on an annual basis once that fiscal year was done. Since we've switched to this much more of a, this is the, the top number that can, that can come to us based on how the, the city performs, there won't be this budget revision unless we were to come back to you all and say, we've got a project that we would like some, to apply for some additional funding for.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
I know that it has been a very successful time for our hotels and motels in the area, so
Really has. They, we're sitting for year-to-date, and their year-to-date is January through now. They're sitting above sixty percent occupancy, and that's getting noticed by a lot of outside hoteliers, as well as some of our locals. They're starting to talk about some additional hotel development. The last time we were at this kind of level of hotel occupancy, it created a real boom in new building of hotels, which then increased our number of visitors. Kind of put that in perspective, we were at about four and a half million visitors in two thousand nine, two thousand ten time period. We're sitting not quite seven million visitors for twenty twenty-three, and so it's been a significant increase of just total visitors. Some of those are day visitors, and they don't spend the night. But having a quality place to spend the night is really important to our visitors, and that then enables our local restaurants and retail shops to be, to thrive better.
Definitely a ripple effect. Jared, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
Yes, ma'am, if I could. We've got most of your answer, so let me, let me walk through that. The total amount of funds year-over-year that are subject to the eventual true-up is one point zero four five million. So five hundred and eighty-five thousand round number is what you have up here for this one grantee. The reserve account that I mentioned, so where the excess revenue over budget flows in today's budgeting, is accumulated right at three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And if you want to look at it in year-over-year percentages, kind of to go to what John is saying, the hotel occupancy tax revenue is running at about an eleven point nine percent increase. So over budget, good. Good side of over budget. Revenue side. Revenue side of over budget.
Councilman Collins?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you to quickly clarify what hot tax is, what it means, where it's derived from, and maybe some of our audience don't know where those dollars come from.
It's oftentimes referred to as the hot tax, but what it really means is the hotel occupancy tax. And so when you go and spend the night, whether it's here or somewhere else, if you, if you have a staycation, or you have friends and relatives that come, and you don't want them in your house, and you would prefer them to stay at a hotel, they pay an occupancy tax as a result of spending the night. It's a percentage based on the, the, the room rate, and so it's the same on any hotel inside the city limits of Lubbock. And here, as a result of all the different entities that charge a tax, it totals fifteen percent. And that breaks down to, so if you buy a hundred-dollar room here, then that would add an additional fifteen dollars in tax dollars coming in. More often, we don't have locals that stay at our local hotels, but they do sometimes. They like the staycations. We've got some great hotels to stay at. So this is more often a tax that visitors pay when they come here. If you were to go to El Paso, you'd pay an additional seventeen and a half percent. I believe it's seventeen percent in San Antonio and some of our other big cities, but we're currently at fifteen percent. That breakdown is six percent goes to the state of Texas, where they run their campaign. Texas is like a whole other country, and they primarily fund the general fund. Eleven-twelfth of that funds the general revenue fund, one-twelfth funds the, that campaign. Then here locally, we get nine percent, excuse me, seven percent that goes to the city of Lubbock, and an additional two percent that goes to the county to help with the planned Expo Center multipurpose arena that they're planning to do. And that, that'll, that'll be a dedicated tax just to help fund that.
That we utilize dollars correct, collected from our visitors to promote visiting.
That's right. We want to use a little bit of that, those, that money that comes in to get more and more visitors to, to come every day and spend as much money as they can, and then hopefully to leave so that they don't use, utilize our regular services. So it is a great way to, oftentimes when they're coming and spending the night, they're going to go and eat out. They are oftentimes going to be shopping, and, and those are all generating some additional tax revenues that help benefit the city of Lubbock and our citizens so that they don't have to pay as much in property taxes.
Very good.
Thank you, John. Is, are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items six point one through six point two eight? Did you have a question excluding six point twenty-three? Did you have a question, Jared?
Thank you, ma'am. My apologies.
Excluding six point twenty-three. Can I get a motion? Motion by Councilman Gleschin, second by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to postpone to date certain item, agenda Item six point two three to our meeting on August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson? August thirteenth.
Do we need to make a motion on that? Motion by Councilman Rose, can I get a second?
I was the motion.
Jennifer, Dr. Wilson is the motion. Second is by Councilman Rose. It's an all-new council, guys. Give me a break. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. At this time, we are going to move to the regular agenda, and we've got a few items that are traditionally, it's a little bit different, but Item seven point one, we need, our we need, our council, traditionally the city of Lubbock's position on the advisory committee has been filled by the city mayor. In light of this, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mayor McBrayer to the city of Lubbock's position on the I-27 advisory committee. Motion by Councilman Gleschin. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Rose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. On item 7.2, council, the position on SPAG formerly held by council member Sheila Patterson-Harris is now vacant, but to maximize the city's representation on the SPAG board, I'd recommend the city council appoint council member Gordon Harris to fill that vacancy, and I entertain a motion to put that into effect. Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, second by council member Gleschin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. And finally, item 7.3, the Transportation Policy Committee on the LMPO has a number of positions dedicated to the city of Lubbock, two of which were formerly occupied by Mayor Payne and council member Massengill. I'd recommend that those two vacancies to be filled by appointing Mayor McBrayer and myself to the committee, and will entertain a motion to that effect. Motion by Councilman Collins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember-woman, Dr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. At this time, we will now move into the Local Government Code. I haven't seen you in a while, by the way, Tristan. And it requires a public hearing for the city council to consider the annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Well, first, I think we need to give you an opportunity to do the presentation.
I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, Mayor Protam and council. This is a public hearing only. Council will not be taking action today for a proposed annexation south of 146th Street, east of Frankfurt Avenue. This is the Highland Oaks subdivision. This is a map of the proposed area of annexation. It's 374 acres. This is the timeline of this process because it's different from your typical petition annexation. So council adopted the resolution of intent to begin this process at their meeting on June 11th. Staff was required to send notification to the property owners within the proposed annexation area. That was completed June 17th. So this is the first public hearing in a series of public hearings. After the hearing today, your next hearing will be July 23rd, and then election day for the residents within that area to vote on this proposed annexation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If not, at this time, I open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 374.74 acres adjacent to the southern city limits of the city of Lubbock, south of 146th Street and east of Frankfurt Avenue. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the annexation? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation? If not, the public hearing is now closed. At this time, we'll now move to the item 7.5 on the resolution, Public Works Wastewater, for a consideration of a resolution receiving the report and recommendation of the private sewer lateral ad hoc committee. And I believe we have Wood Franklin that will be making the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam and council. What I have before you is a presentation. We're going to go ahead and kind of give you a little bit of background leading up to the private sewer lateral ad hoc committee recommendation. Get this going. And kind of want to start out with a little history of city of Lubbock sewer system. It's kind of relevant, but kind of give you, start all the way back when city of Lubbock started, back in 1920. City of Lubbock started with its first water reclamation plant. That was actually located on Compress Avenue and 19th Street. Back in 1960 to 1990, we had a north water reclamation plant over there by Clovis Highway, kind of over there by Burl Huffman Soccer Complex, and some structures are still there. But that was our newest plant, kind of a new technology at that time. In 1935, we started what we call Sewer Plant Number One at our Southeast Water Reclamation Plant. That is our current site, where we have current facilities and current plant operations today. Between 1952 and 1992, we added additional plants at that location, Plant Two, Plant Three, Plant Four. And a very important date, 2007, is when we started upgrading our plant for the stream quality discharge, and that's when we started discharging our effluent out there at FM400, going out there north of Slaton, or Sea of Slaton. In 2018, that's where we started our new water reclamation plant. It's over there in northwest Lubbock, over there at Slide and Clovis Highway. This is our new technology plant that introduces membrane technology, and it also stream discharges all of its effluent over there at North Loop, just north of Canyon Lakes Number One. Both of those dates are very important for future water use and reuse of water. I kind of want to give you heads up on kind of where we are going back. I've got some fun stats. Being an engineer, I like stats. Regarding our city mains, and we have 1,300 miles of sewer mains and 19,000, almost 20,000 manholes. We have 2,100 miles of water mains and 7,743 fire hydrants. While those are fun stats, they do become important in kind of the history of our sewer lateral line. I'll kind of touch on that here in a little bit. In the ordinance definitions, kind of want to give you a little bit of definition that's always been in our ordinance. Sanitary sewer lines, those are defined as publicly-owned pipe or conduit designed to collect and transport industrial waste and domestic sewage. These are the sewer lines that we talk about that the city owns. They're in the alleys, they're going parallel down the alleys and take all of our effluent and all of our wastewater down to our sewer plants that I just mentioned. Our sanitary sewer lateral lines, these are privately-owned sewer lines that carries wastewater from a home or business to a public sanitary sewer main. Private line ownership shall be from the home to the connection of the sewer Y, T, tapping saddle, or connection with sanitary sewer main. It's very important for this conversation. This is nothing that's changed. Both of these definitions have been and always in our ordinance. So the sewer lateral line that we're talking about today, the ownership is private from the property line or from the structure of the house, looking at a residential situation, all the way to the public sanitary sewer line in the alley. A graphical representation of this, this is just a very simple drawing from our house. You kind of come out of the house, there's a cleanout that you work in, that you can kind of go in and maintain that line. And the private sewer service line is highlighted, that goes into the public right-of-way or in most cases, alleys. Here's a different graphical representation with some aerial photography on it, and kind of showing that not all properties are identical. This case scenario, this water's on one side, sewer's on another side of an alley. This is your typical 20-foot alley, and we have a 10-foot separation of water and sewer lines to meet compliance with TCQ and health regulations. So depending on what side of the alley, your private sewer lateral line may extend 15 feet into the alley or five feet into the alley. Just for clarification, this is not just a residential issue. This is also business issues. So we do have business and commercial. Some of these are serviced through easements on property, so it's a non-issue regarding public right-of-way. But there are many of our businesses that are generally serviced through easements or right-of-ways, very similar to residential. Kind of give you a little bit of history on the Lubbock sewer lateral line going on. Prior to 1980, plumbers were responsible for the installation of sewer taps and sewer lateral line maintenance. Going into the 1980s, the city took over installation of the sewer taps. That was done because these are constructions happening on city-owned infrastructure, and we wanted to be in control of that. So the tap repairs or the tap installation was done post-1980 by the city of Lubbock, and the maintenance of the sewer lateral lines was still the homeowner. In 2005, 2006, that fiscal year with the city of Lubbock, that's when the city took over repairs of private sewer lateral lines. This required that the city of Lubbock are the only ones working in the rights-of-way. A capital project was created to help fund this with CO bonds. This was kind of done because around this time, we started seeing more and more utilities in the alleys. We started seeing fiber optics, which wasn't there before. We started having mandates that the electrical lines be buried in alleys. We saw more than one telecommunications coming in because of all the communications going on. So we started seeing more and more franchise utilities. And so the contract work or the work that was happening in the alleys, they had to deal with that additional infrastructure and also the repairs and the backfill. We were having problems with the backfill. So we wanted to get that under control. And so the ordinance was changed in 2006 for the city of Lubbock to take over maintenance of the private sewer lateral lines in the alley. In 2021, the ordinance was amended to allow contractors to install taps. This is mainly done on new lines. It's done by contract. It's done under supervision of the city, of our city water departments and engineering departments. And so those were done and allowed under new development. So if you had a new development coming on prior to 2021, those taps could be done by private contractors. In 2023, we proposed, staff proposed an ordinance change that was ultimately adopted in January 8th of this year. That was after 90-day grace period after the adoption of the ordinance that required maintenance of sewer lateral lines, private sewer lateral lines to be done by plumbers or contractors at the cost of the homeowners. So in January 8th of this year, that pendulum kind of switched back to the homeowners taking ownership and responsibility and cost of the maintenance of those lines in public right-of-way. One of the reasons staff proposed this, so staff proposed this mainly because a lot of our pipeline maintenance crews were going towards work on private sewer lateral lines. We gave a presentation to city council a while back. I know we've got a new city council here, so that's kind of why we're presenting this. Essentially, 50% of our pipeline maintenance time was related to sewer lateral line repairs on private sewer lateral lines in public alleys. This was either due to old, you heard orange bird pipe, due to crushed lines, whether it's backfill issues or whatever, or clog lines due to what we call fog, batts, oils, and grease, just a lot of issues, a lot of things going on. So majority of our pipeline maintenance crews was designated to this. And this work was resulting in the deferred maintenance of our water and sewer infrastructure, our public infrastructures, specifically fire hydrants and valve maintenance. We had a lot of deferred maintenance on our fire hydrants. We had a lot of fire hydrants that were out of service, and we have a lot of valves that were out of service, which results into whenever we have water main breaks, we got to go back and work these valves, and those valves are broken, and we got to go back and work more valves, and that's just the deferred time on getting that water line repaired. Also, we wanted to increase customer service and response time to the homeowners. When a homeowner is working and hired a private plumber, they worked in the backyard of their, on their sewer lateral line. When it went to the alley and that portion of the alley had to be replaced, kind of had to stop that work, had to call the city, we had to call in locates and basically have a contractor transfer. And so we wanted to increase the response time and allow that contractor to continue work in the alley. Also, we wanted to allow the property owner to have freedom to hire their own plumber of choice. Those were some of the recommendations, unlike staff wanted to change the ordinance back to the private homeowner. However, back in April 29th of this year, city council reverted that and went back, basically adopted the original ordinance prior to January 8th of this year. So the affected, the current ordinance that we have on the book, and I kind of go over here and just read you the highlights. Basically, the city is the only authorized person or persons that can work in the alley to replace the customer's lateral line located within the public right-of-way. So currently, under this current ordinance, no private plumbers can work in the public right-of-way. The customers shall be responsible for cleaning, clearing, removing obstructions, and maintenance and operation of that line. That was in there originally prior to any of these changes. Essentially, if there's something that, that line can be cleaned internally through the cleanout, we want the homeowner to go ahead and clean that out all the way to the city There's also a couple of things in here that the contractor, if the customer has a contractor, that they get proper permits and comply with applicable laws. Of course, we always want that in there, and the customer utility contractor shall perform the proper one-call notification. Most of that's related to work within their backyard or on a private property. As far as repairs, something that's in there today, a contractor of the customer shall not make the repairs in the public right-of-way. Rather, requests for repair shall be made directly to the water department by the contractor making the sanitary sewer repairs. This was in there prior to January 8th of this year, and it was put back in there. So a citizen really can't call to dispatch a city crew, it's got to go through a licensed plumber. So you got to work with a licensed plumber to get that taken care of, get that call coming over to us. The city personnel will perform the paving and concrete repair. That's kind of come back regarding the recommendation of the committee. And also on the sewer lateral request for repair, sewer lateral service lines in city right-of-way shall be made directly to the water utility department by a licensed plumber. Kind of highlighted on that one and touched on that earlier. After that adoption, the council, going back and reverted to the original ordinance, council put together an ad hoc committee to kind of look at this situation and see, the pendulum swung from one side all the way to the other side, to see where it really should fit, see what's going on, and see, give it a more in-depth look. So that ad hoc committee was convened in two weeks of April 23rd, 2024. The council desires to determine whether and to what extent the homeowner of the property connected to the sewer main or the city of Lubbock should pay. So basically, one of the main goals was to have this committee look and see who should be responsible for the payment of the maintenance of this. The committee was also tasked to study relevant issues promptly and reporting back to the city council, and that's where we are today. And I will say promptly was a big term. This committee had 10 meetings since April 23rd. They spent several hours working and discussing on this situation. You had a very good committee that was put together in your chair as well. I commend them on spending their time. They're not a paid committee, they're not paid for this. They put in and dedicated their own time, and I can definitely say that every one of their committee members participated in the discussion and gave their input on this. That committee was comprised of six represented by council districts. One, the chair was appointed by the mayor, and also consisted of four representatives of the plumbing industry here in Lubbock. And they were tasked with providing written summary on the first city council meeting in July, and here we are. I know you had a previous one that kind of came on early, but here we are today to give that recommendation. With that, I'm going to introduce the committee chair, Jeff Reese, and go ahead and let him talk about the committee and what they put into it, and kind of go over their recommendation and the report that's going to be given to you today. With that, Jeff Reese.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Christie?
How are you, Jeff?
City council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our findings and recommendations. I want to take this opportunity to introduce committee members. First, from District One, Jaime de la Cruz. Second, District Two, Drew Landry. With us today, District Three, Jeff Seidman. If you'll stand, please, sir. District Four, Justin Backus. District Five, Dale Henter. And District Six, Matthew Hadley. We also have four appointees representing four different plumbing companies. Mark Branscombe from Lowery Plumbing, who also served as our assistant chair, Eric Hurst from Blue Sky Plumbing, Randy Lopez from HD Weaver, and Joe Rushing from Joe Rushing Plumbing. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything that we did to pull this together. I want to recognize some city staff that was amazing in their resource role. Eric, Mr. Eric ACM, as I called him, Assistant City Manager. Wood, of course, John Turpin, Assistant Director. Kelly Leisure from your department, sir, from Legal. April, Management Assistant, and Diane from the right-of-way. I was very impressed with the committee members and city staff, and I commend them to you. If you'll pull up that next one. Do I do it? How do I do it? Thank you. As he said, we had 10 meetings. We talked about landing the plane on a short runway. We began May 2nd, ended July 3rd. We had over 410 man-hours. So I want to emphasize that point. This was not something that we took lightly. We didn't breeze through this. We had meetings that lasted from two to four hours. So there was 410 man-hours put into this. All committee members were engaged through the entire process, and we had an 89% attendance rate through the meetings. So everybody was very engaged. We had a number of emails and in-person public comments, and I know that some of those folks are here with us today. We appreciated that. We had news media at several of the meetings. Took a lot of straw polls, and we wore out a bunch of whiteboard markers. There was a wide range of opinions, some even shifted during the process. We were unanimous on some issues and divided on others. Our committee was charged with making a recommendation to answer this question, whether and to what extent the owner of the property or the city of Lubbock should pay to perform repairs. In other words, who pays? The property owner or the city? On the surface, it seems like On the surface, it seems like a simple question with a simple answer. The who pays question leads to two conflicting points of view regarding the financial responsibility. Let the city pay for all of it and raise rates to pay for it, or let the property owner pay for all of it, often resulting in financial hardship. After those 410 man-hours, we do not believe that it is a simple answer. And in fact, we find that it is a complicated answer. We had very serious discussions and we wrestled with the issues. We frequently found ourselves in the weeds. For example, what do other Texas cities do? How much would it cost the city to add a crew and purchase new equipment? How much has it really cost the city to do this work on average? How can we enhance the community development program? What would wastewater rate increase look like? Why does this lateral sewer line in the right-of-way cost so much more in relation to the yard line? We were not content with only answering who pays. We wanted to understand the ramifications of our recommendations and address them as best we could. In addition to answering who pays, our recommendations also address other issues such as who qualifies and how often, paved alleys and streets, commercial versus residential properties, and a review process. So that's the introduction. Here's our recommendations. We find that the city of Lubbock and the property owner both have a vested interest and that both should bear financial responsibility. Our reasoning is this. The property owner owns the sewer lateral line located in the public right-of-way. The sewer, the property owner can negatively impact the condition of the line, i.e. grease, tree roots, et cetera. The city of Lubbock administers the public right-of-way. Thank you. City of Lubbock administers the public right-of-way, including new and existing franchise utilities. City of Lubbock is tasked with overseeing the overall safety and health of the Lubbock community. The city of Lubbock routinely permits or allows the operation of equipment for purposes of public services and maintenance of and within the public right-of-way. This recommendation will allow city of Lubbock Pipeline Maintenance Crews to commit resources that were previously diverted back to maintenance on the public water distribution and public wastewater collection system, i.e. those fire hydrants and valves. We recommend a split that looks like this. The committee recommends that the city of Lubbock continue to financially participate in the private sewer lateral line replacement within the public right-of-way. The city's financial commitment should be a one-time subsidy not to exceed $2,500 per existing individual private sewer lateral line located in the public right-of-way. This one-time subsidy would be paid directly to the plumber or contractor on behalf of the property owner. This committee recommends that the property owner is financially responsible for the remaining balance. Point number two. We find that currently, Orangeburg represents an extremely high percentage of the number of repairs and replacements. However, there are other materials that require repair and replacement. This committee recommends that all pipe materials are eligible for this subsidy. Number three. We find that there are many possibilities that can contribute to sewer line issues, such as grease, foreign objects, tree roots, collapse, separation, et cetera. This committee recommends that eligibility for this subsidy is contingent upon failure of the pipe structural integrity, including collapse, root damage, joint separation, and excluding failures due to inappropriate materials introduced into the pipe resulting in a blockage of flow. Pipe strikes and warranty failures are not eligible for this subsidy, as these would be covered by the contractors who perform the work through a cleanse process. Number four. We find that there are significant challenges and liabilities when working in the public right-of-way. This committee recommends that only privately licensed plumbers or TCEQ-approved contractors with a Class III collections license that are registered with the city of Lubbock Right-of-Way Department shall be allowed to work within the public right-of-way on private sewer lateral lines. Number five. We find that there are significant challenges and liabilities when working in the public right-of-way and in city streets. Therefore, this committee recommends that all asphalt and concrete paving repairs be funded and performed by the city of Lubbock. I'm going to pause, mostly to breathe. Items one through five are very specific recommendations. When we get to number six through 11, basically, the committee is punting these back to you because we think these are very significant issues, but we think the council and staff need to figure out the details. Number six. We find that our recommendations will increase the need for additional city administration. This committee recommends that city council provide the appropriate city resources to adequately implement this program, including resources related to administration, inspection and public education. Number seven. This committee unanimously believes that residential and commercial property owners should be treated differently. This committee recommends that only residential properties are eligible for this subsidy. Number eight. This committee is aware that some property owners may not be able to afford and cannot qualify for financial assistance for sewer lateral repair or replacement under the existing community development program. This committee unanimously recommends that the city of Lubbock adopt a low-income financial assistance program to assist these property owners in the cost above the city of Lubbock's one-time subsidy. I'm going to pause for emphasis. This was an item in our discussions that was kind of a table pounding thing. We seriously believe that more res, more resources need to be brought to bear. Frequently, we heard from comments, as you heard from others today, that this can create a significant hardship. Number nine. We find that numerous property owners were caught in the gap between the changes in city ordinance. This committee recommends that the city council consider a reimbursement not to exceed $2,500 per lateral line as recommended above for those property owners that replace and funded their own private sewer lateral line between January 8th and April 29th of '24, when the city ordinance required such. Number 10. This committee finds in recent, that the recent changes to the ordinance were poorly communicated, resulting in considerable public misunderstanding and misinformation on this topic. This committee recommends that city council consider implementing a thorough process to provide public education on and communication of this topic, including educational efforts related to sewer lateral line maintenance on behalf of the property owner. Another pause. I created an account on the Nextdoor app for the sole purpose of reading all of the comments. It'll be deleted as soon as we're done. I also read and watched every news story I could find on this topic in the city of Lubbock. There is so much misinformation, okay? Frequently, in our committee meetings, I was using the whiteboard and I would write the word "communication" and I would circle it in red because we did not handle this well and we must do so going forward. I think everyone would agree that the end of '23, beginning of '24, was a mess related to this topic. It was a very confusing time for the stakeholder groups, our citizens, the city and the plumbers. We need to do better. Number 11. This committee finds that it would be prudent for these recommendations to be reviewed annually with the city budget process to make necessary changes due to economics, development, construction methods and materials. The committee endorses this report and its recommendations and will discuss such with the city council at their request. That's the end of our formal report. This committee believes that acceptance of these recommendations will result in the following value statements. Both parties are financially invested in the resolution of the issue and held accountable. This allows the city to return to maintaining critical water and wastewater infrastructure. This allows the property owner to have control over the quality and schedule of the repairs performed by registered contractors certified to work in the right-of-way. All types of plumbing are covered with a clear definition of what and who qualifies for the subsidy. These recommendations will increase access to financial assistance to facilitate repairs or replacement. Increased public communication and education on the topic. This stops the back-and-forth pendulum swing regarding financial responsibility. This acknowledges that the current ordinance is not sensible or sustainable. Critical maintenance of things like fire hydrants and water valves is not being addressed in a timely manner. This could lead to life safety concerns and frequently leads to additional expense and inconvenience. Something needs to change. Thank you for your time and your consideration of our recommendations.
Committee member Reese, and to all of your committee members and staff, you guys have done a very thorough and outstanding job. It's no doubt that everyone will probably have questions, but also some very good feedback. With that, I believe that we have Dr. Jennifer Wilson.
Mr. Reese, in the committee, I just want to tell you guys thank you so much. This was probably one of the more, if not the most complex issues we have sent out to the public to look at in a committee. And I know y'all put in a tremendous amount of time. Everybody, including Dale from my district, I know how hard you guys worked on this. We appreciate you trying to come to some type of compromise. This was not an easy issue. This was not some, oh yeah, let's just throw a committee together and, and, you know, and justify something in one way or the other. And we want you to know that we appreciate how much time you guys put into this, along with city staff and with all of you guys, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Gordon Harris.
Yes, I just have a question about the, the low-income financial assistance as far as getting this done. I mean, what's the eligibility for that?
I'll start at the beginning. One of the questions that came up early in committee meetings was what resources can be brought to bear for somebody who needs it? And the community development program was brought up as something that was already in place. And these are going to be my layman's terms, so forgive me. The threshold for meeting it was so low that it knocked a lot of people out. People that I might, or you might say, really deserved to get some assistance, but that threshold was set low. And it's my understanding that that's not Lubbock doing that, that's a HUD thing, okay? So we struggled with that because we knew that we were sort of heading towards this hybrid model, which was going to include some burden on that homeowner. And there's going to be some folks that need some help. And that program is not going to be, is not going to qualify to do that. And so our recommendation is, is that something be found. And we don't know what, that's why we're punting, because we don't even know what we don't know. But we did quiz staff quite a bit on some possibilities. The impact thing came up. We, we just looked at a lot of different things that we thought might work and finally decided we just needed to punt. So we're punting, sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilmember Collins?
Yes, thank you. And, and I want to thank you and your team as well. Obviously, there were a lot of hours and a lot of time put into this. And, and I want to ask a couple of questions and maybe just restate some of the things that in your report for the purpose of allowing the public to hear it and, and for the council members to, to also be recognizing some of the things that I think were important and part of that communication. Without a doubt, you folks have determined that the sewer line belongs to the property owner.
Yes, sir.
And I think that was one of the things that was miscommunicated and often discussed in the public forums about who's that was. But we are determined that that is, belongs to the public. I mean, to the property owner, not the public. And so the committee is recommending a split to the cost of the repairs. And I'm assuming that's a 50-50 split, but...
No, sir, I would not categorize it as 50-50. We looked at, we, we talked about all kinds of dollars and percents. And we landed at this place of the city subsidizing it $2,500. There would be some repairs that that would cover everything, some perhaps even less. There may be some that are $3,000 until the property owner's coming up with 500. So no, I would not say 50-50.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
So there's, there's a clarity point that I think certainly needs to be made. So, so we're not necessarily implying that the cost is 4,000 to 5,000. Maybe this 2,500 is going to cover it in its entirety, okay? And so, given that we recognize that sewer line is in the alley, tell me how the committee came to the conclusion that the city should participate? Is there, what was the thought process?
These are not in your notes, they're in mine. The, under number one, I'm going to restate some of the reasoning that we had. So you did, you did say correctly that the property owner owns that portion of the line. And they have some control over what happens with that line. They could plant a tree on top of it. They could be pouring buckets, buckets of grease through there, so they have some impact on it. The property owner, I mean, the, the city maintains that right-of-way. And we got into a lot of definitions. The city does not own that alley. The public owns that alley. It's a very, if I'm saying this wrong, jump in, please, Wood. I don't own that alley and the city does not own that alley. The public owns that alley. We own that, it's a right-of-way. And so when you start looking at that and you look at, just to use names, AT&amp;T runs a fiber through there, Suddenlink runs a fiber through there, Atmos runs a gas line, there's a water line, there's all these things running through there. I, as a property owner, have zero control over that, none. Now, I may benefit from it, to be sure, but I have zero control over that. And so this expense jumps a lot when you're talking about doing my yard from here to the fence versus when you get out into that alley, that five feet or that 10 feet, and I'm dodging all this stuff, okay? So, I'm not sure I'm answering your question. I'm giving you probably more than you asked for, but it, it, yes, I own it, but I have no control over all this other stuff. The city's the one allowing that to happen. There's franchise fees and all this other stuff happening. So the city has some vested interest in what happens there. The city also is responsible for the overall public health and safety. If Mark decides that he's not going to do anything, he's just going to let his sewage back up in the backyard, that's not fair or healthy for the next-door neighbor. So the city has some impact in making sure that happens correctly. The third point was, I'm going to bring it up, it's a bad word. There's a big public perception that trash trucks are the cause of this, okay? The data doesn't support that. But there's, it makes sense logically that that truck's running up and down that alley all day long and it's crushing. Well, the data that we're getting from city does not support the idea that trash trucks are the cause. But they might be a contributing factor. Graders are running up and down the alley, leveling stuff and all that. So the city has a vested interest in what's going on. So does the property owner. That's why we landed here. It does not seem fair, if you will, to say that it's all on the property owner who has no control over what's happening in that right-of-way. Likewise, it's, doesn't seem fair to the city to just say it's all on the city because you have an impact on it too. And technically, you own it, you own it legally. Sorry, I didn't mean to ramble.
No, you didn't ramble. Back up and let's clarify, when you say you own it?
The property owner owns it.
Okay, okay. So the property owner owns the, the line. And we've mentioned Orangeburg. Maybe one of your plumber committee members could help us with what that is and the timeframe in which that type of pipe was used?
I can tell you what it is. If you took a paper towel, the cardboard part of a paper towel thing, and coated it with some tar and called it a pipe, that's Orangeburg. Am I saying that fair enough, Mark?
An orange?
Yep. And so paper towels have been in existence for a while, but not used for sewer pipe. About what time, Mark, did those, did those go away?
1960?
Yeah, 50 and 60 because of the sort of...
Okay, so, so what we're talking about primarily is replacing pipe that is 70-plus years old? And that's the primary thing that we're doing?
Eighty-four, the city did some analysis and said that 84% of the work they had done in a 12-month period was Orangeburg.
84%? Okay, okay. And so if we are to determine, and, and part of your recommendation is that we would determine the cause or the location of the collapse or the damage. And granted, in Orangeburg, you're going to have to replace 100%. But if we're looking at a cardboard tube and we're trying to determine where the damage was or what caused it, I, I don't know that there's anything but to say, we can't do that.
You could see where it collapsed. You couldn't necessarily identify cause. Orangeburg collapses all the time in your backyard, all the time. And there's no trash trucks running there. It's just the nature of it. It wasn't designed to last this long and it's obviously an inferior product.
Well, 70 years old, it's, I think probably it's done its service. Your air conditioner, your hot water heater, you know, lots of your home components don't... you know, lots of your home components don't last 70 years. So, if we're lasting that long, we've gotten our money's worth, I would think. And so, we would, but there's no way then to go back and say that this particular homeowner has maybe used grease, or maybe has done other damage, or there's trees that have caused this. And so, we're just going to have to assume that with Orangeburg, everything's...
Let me kind of walk you through what a typical situation looks like, Mark. You're a homeowner, and toilets aren't flushing right, okay? And you're like, I got a drain problem. You call the plumber. Hey, my drains aren't, my toilet's not flushing. He comes out and he snakes that. And he says, the problem is not here. The problem is out here in your yard. So, he goes to that cleanout, and he starts trying to clean that out. And he's like, I can't get all the way through. So, then he puts a camera in there, and he says, oh, it's collapsed right out here. Okay, we're going to have to dig that up and replace that part of it right here. While we're doing that, do you want to do the whole thing up to, you know, up to the fence? Or do you just want to patch this, whatever? So, what we're talking about then is once you get past the fence. So, the guy's already there on site. And he's already identified, he's dealing with Orangeburg, and he probably maybe seen tree roots, he maybe seen grease or whatever else, or a Hot Wheels car, all kinds of things. So, what we're talking about is that area past the fence, right outside there. He's going to have a pretty good idea at that point what's going on, that it's just collapsed. There's no grease. There's no Hot Wheels car. It's just old and it's collapsed.
Okay.
Did I answer your question, sir?
Pretty much, pretty much. And so, we're, we're advocating that the city be responsible for paving, whether that be concrete or asphalt, to repair that after the excavation's been done.
As is currently, sir.
As it is currently. And, and if there isn't paving in place, who's going to be responsible for a proper backfill?
The plumber is. There's compaction standards that plumbers are required to follow to meet that.
Okay. So, if, if there's only a dirt alley, then the plumber's going to, going to compact it and do the backfill. And so, and, and I understand the items now that I had on my list that you've chosen to punt. And I don't blame you, and maybe we can punt them back to you. I don't know. But I guess, you know, to, to summarize my questions and, and what you guys have come up with would be this. You guys are recommending, your committee is recommending that the city pay up to, or essentially pay $2,500 for the repair, no matter what the extent of the repair or the cost of the repair. And so, you are essentially telling us or asking us to consider that the homeowner who owns this pipe and who maybe has received 50, 60, 70 years of service from this pipe, not pay anything, depending on the cost.
That could be, depending on the cost. This is a dangerous area, so let's put a big asterisk there, please, sir. We had a lot of discussion about what average looked like, because we needed something to guide our conversation. We talked about an average being 3,500 to 4,500 was something that we could kind of agree on, being an average situation, okay? So, when we looked at that, we were trying to take into account what a home, a property owner might be responsible for and what the city could be responsible for. So, we did have many discussions about percentages. So, yes, it's possible that the total repair is funded by the city. And we made peace with that because the city is managing the right-of-way and all the reasons that I've given you. We also made peace with the fact that if it was $4,000 and the property owner was having to come up with $1,500, that that was right also because it was their pipe, because they had influence over the integrity of it and things like that.
Okay. Again, thank you for indulging me. Thank you for your time. All of you guys who served on this, I appreciate it very much. Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Gleschin.
Sure. Mr. Reese, first of all, I want to say thank you for your work on the committee. And thank you to everybody else who is willing to serve on the committee. And I know y'all put a lot of work into studying these issues. I've got some questions, and if, if they're items you punt it on, or you don't have an answer, that's fine. But I just want to see if these are things you have advice on. So, first, why $2,500? I mean, it's not, it's not a 50-50 split, so why 2,500?
How long do I have to answer?
Not too much time.
Not too much. Thank you, Kristi. We, we wrestled with that, sir. When we got down to trying to land the plane and figure out what a recommendation was going to look like, we had two numbers on the board. We had $2,000 and 2,500 that the city would, we were going to put in that subsidy line. It was not a unanimous decision, but the majority said, let's land on 2,500. There was a lot of different reasoning. We took a lot of straw poles, and what we found sometimes after the pole was that Mr. Harris said yes to an idea, but his reasoning was different than the same, what you, you said yes to the same idea, but your reasoning was different. So, I, I wouldn't be comfortable standing here and tell you that it was all one thing. We came upon that after 410 man-hours of discussion. I'm, I'm going to punt an answer back to you. Because, that's where we landed.
Is, is that some...
And I'm okay with somebody else jumping in.
Is there a specific metric that that's tied to? Like, that's an average cost of repair, given a certain set of circumstances? Anything like that?
No, sir. Some of the background for that dollar amount came from this idea. How much was the city paying on average currently for a crew, a truck, materials, et cetera? So, we tasked John and Wood with getting us that information. Early on, there were some numbers that were thrown out in a meeting or some, way before us, of like $1,000. Well, having plumbers on the group, they challenged that and said, there's no way that you're doing that for $1,000. And so, we began asking some really hard questions, and we very much got into the weeds of, well, what size is the crew? What's the equipment? What are the materials? And so, they don't account for their trucks and equipment in the city budget the same way that a plumber might. And so, as we began to really nitpick at that, that number rose to about $2,000, okay? Even then, there were some on the committee that said, I still am not sure you're including everything that you need to include through the eyes of what a plumbing company might do, okay? To attribute all of the cost for an, an average repair. That's where we got 2,500. But it, everybody had different reasons for getting there. So, if your only takeaway is that, well, that's what they're spending now, that's part of the track that got us there, but it's not the answer.
Is there any concern that if you say the city's going to pay $2,500, that creates an incentive for whoever's doing the work to make sure they bill at least $2,500?
We did discuss that, sir. That, yes, that opportunity exists. We had a lot of discussions about free enterprise and the marketplace, and at some point, that's going to, we're going to run those people out because of competency or integrity.
If there's a government-mandated price floor on, on the price of repair, that a plumber knows they will never have to charge less than $2,500 to do a repair, are you concerned that that removes the market incentive to do the cost or to do the repair for less than $2,500 if possible?
I would say that it was an item that we discussed. Yes, that opportunity exists.
And we talked about how there's going to have to be some investigation done to determine whether or not the homeowner is eligible for the subsidy. Who, who do you imagine is going to conduct the investigation?
Well, the plumber that I referenced is on site with his camera is, as I understand from some of the discussions that we had, that they're going to be tasked with providing that video, identifying where they were in terms of footage and what they're, what they're seeing, what they're finding. When you pull that equipment back, you frequently pull it back, and it's got roots on it, or you can tell that it's been in a blob of grease. So, the initial part of that is going to be on the plumber saying to staff, to a department, here's our findings. And then, staff is going to have to say, yes, that meets. Okay, you can proceed, or no, it doesn't meet. It's a Hot Wheels car. It's not the city's problem.
So, you imagine it's primarily going to be the plumber who's doing the work that would make the determination about whether or not the homeowner is eligible for the subsidy?
I wouldn't say it that way, sir. I would say that the plumber's providing the evidence to staff.
Other than the plumber, is anyone else gathering evidence under your recommendation about whether or not the homeowner is eligible?
Not that I'm aware of. I would add that part of the thing that we spent a lot, a little bit of time discussing was inspection. And that when we said more resources need to be given, that's a significant part of that resource, is that there has to be city inspection of it as well. The compaction standards are being met, that it is in fact where the plumber says it is, et cetera. I don't want to give a license to a plumber to start stealing. That's, that is just not, that doesn't work for us.
And have you all considered a scenario where, for example, a plumber says this should be eligible for a subsidy? The staff doesn't agree. Have you thought about how to resolve that conflict?
We did discuss including as another item in here, some kind of appeal process. We never formalized a recommendation, but we did discuss the concept of an appeal whereby somebody could say, whoa, wait a minute. I don't agree with my plumber. I don't agree with staff, or whatever it might be. I think it would be prudent. Yes, sir.
What if the plumber can't make a determination about what caused the pipe to fail? Would a homeowner still be eligible for a subsidy under your recommendation?
I am not a plumber. I have been, I've learned that frequently, especially with Orangeburg, there is no identifiable cause. It just failed. It just collapsed. And so, you're not going to go down there and find the smoking gun. It's just collapsed.
But in that scenario where we can't identify a cause, would the homeowner still be eligible for the subsidy under your recommendations?
Yes.
So, the homeowner would be eligible if, I guess, if we were going back to number three on your report, maybe it would, it would be more accurate to say that the homeowner's eligible if there's structural failure, collapse, root damage, joint separation, or an undetermined cause. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
What would stop a homeowner from shopping around and going through the list of plumbers until they find one who says, oh, yeah, you qualify for a subsidy on this one?
I don't know how to answer that. One of the things that...
Wouldn't. Could you answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way that we see this is kind of the way things happen today on, on certain situations. Today, the licensed plumber has to call the city out. We review the camera. We determine, yes, it's a situation that we need to come out and replace it. So, we kind of see this, that the plumber comes out. The plumber provides information that there is structural integrity. There is, the pipe is compromised. We would then issue a pre-approval process that this does meet our subsidy, our, meets the recommendations outlined by this, assuming council adopts it. And then, we would inspect that through the process of construction. Inspect the new pipe, make sure we're getting new pipe, make sure that it's done per our standards and specifications, make sure the backfill's complete. And to kind of go back, there would still be backfill and pavement, that the contractor has to come up. We're just talking about the pavement repair. Contractor's responsible to backfill, verify that all those are in place prior to any payment being approved.
And so, would, what would stop a homeowner from going and getting a second or third opinion from a plumber until they find one that says that they're eligible for the subsidy?
Well, it'd be the city that's saying they're eligible for subsidy, not the plumbers. The plumber's providing information, and then the city would be the one determining eligibility. It's not the plumber. We're just looking at eligibility based on the evidence that the plumber's providing. And so, I don't see that the evidence changes whether it's plumber A or plumber B.
So, you're saying that it's exclusively the city that's making the determination based off of the plumber's investigation?
Yes, sir.
But what if, it's, my thought is, what if one plumber finds one thing, another plumber finds another thing? You know, the first plumber comes and says, I found grease. The second plumber came and said, oh, no, it just collapsed. I can't tell what happened. I mean, what, what's the process to review it like that?
Well, I mean, we don't have the program in place, so it's very hard to determine all the what ifs in those scenarios.
And that's okay. I'm just, I'm just kind of asking until we get to the end of the recommendation.
We would have to review that, just like we do, I mean, we have construction methods going on right now. A developer builds sewer, water and sewer lines. We inspect them, and, and do they meet the standard specifications? And there's discrepancies back and forth, and we just have to make those recommendations and determination. You know, some, some things may change. Plumber came out there, looked at it, and we said, there's no structural integrity. You've got fat soils and grease in your line. Doesn't meet. They don't replace it. And three months later, they come back and, and the situation's changed. So, now there is something going on. So, we would just have to look at each one of these individually based on the information and facts provided.
What if there's a scenario where the line inside the fence needs to be replaced? It makes sense then from a cost perspective, you're at the end of the age of the pipe already to replace the rest of the line. Would a homeowner be eligible for a subsidy under discretionary replacement?
We talked about that, and that would not meet that situation. They can replace it because they can hire a plumber and they replace it. But discretionary, if you're replacing it in your line, in your alley, I mean, sorry, in your backyard, and you want to go ahead and replace it because you, as a homeowner. So, those situations do occur currently right now on transfer of titles. There are some inspections and some lenders that want, just like your electrical service and your roof be replaced or whatever. There are some that inspect the plumbing, and they want the plumbing replaced. The structural integrity's still there. It still works. It may be 20 years old, and the life is no longer 60 years. Maybe it's 10 years. And lender may want that replaced. That is not a structural integrity. It's something that we believe that the public should be replacing, but a homeowner should have the option to replace that.
Have you all, and I, whoever answers this is fine and indifferent. Did the committee consider a situation where, for example, you have a new construction, and the home builder chooses some really cheap material that fails within a year? And then, you know, is the homeowner eligible for a subsidy there? Is the city going to look to the home builder for choosing bad materials?
There are standards that we have for pipe materials for new construction, whether it's infrastructure that we own. If it's infrastructure that's private, then the plumbing code meets those. I would assume that there's two, you know, very similar to when a developer installs sewer for the city of Lubbock. We carry a two-year warranty on those situations, and homeowners carry kind of the same thing. But those, those pipe materials that are specified and required today should meet those situations. If the structural integrity of that pipe is compromised in new construction due to poor workmanship, then no, it would not, we wouldn't feel that it would be qualified.
We've talked about how the, under the proposal, the city will repair the surface of the alleyway, whether that's asphalt or concrete or dirt. Now, some homeowners chose as a discretionary item to pave or concrete the alleyway, knowing that they may have to pay for repairs to that in the future. Why would, under your recommendation, the city pay for the cost of repairing the surface where the homeowners chose to pave it initially?
Well, that's a surface in the alley, whether it's a paved alley, which is a requirement when there's rear entry, or a street. We're having a lot of, the question kind of came up. We're having a lot of subdivisions coming in that aren't, there's no alleys, no alley pavement. So, we have sewer lines under a street. And we really, we, the city, we kind of guided them on that scenario.
They don't want plumbers doing it.
I don't think that I want a licensed plumber, no offense to the licensed plumber. They have specialty in their work, and their work is not asphalt and street repairs. And so, there's a liability that we're concerned about from a city standpoint, having a licensed plumber come out and do street repair on a thoroughfare, on a residential street. And then, if that work's not done correctly, it could cause either a failure that we have to come back and repair, or it could cause a safety for the public, traveling public if there is a collapse in that. So, we, that, that's the public infrastructure that we want to have control of it. I would like, if that's the scenario and we adopt something like this, I would like that we have standards and specifications so that a plumber just doesn't go out there and dig a big old hole just because it's convenient to him. We would have specifications that they do have limits on the size and how they cut that, and those are saw cut, and they're done appropriately so that we can come back and do a repair. That's not costly and outrageous for the city. But that infrastructure is important and critical to the public, and we feel like we need to be the ones doing that work.
My last question is on hybrid commercial residential properties. Have y'all, did the committee look at a scenario where, for example, a home is, you know, occupied by the homeowner but sometimes used as an Airbnb, or, you know, there's some sort of business that's run out of the home if it's in a gray area between residential and commercial?
We talked about that extensively. We, as a group, early on, I began to use commercial versus residential to get us on some consensus. Well, residential's pretty easy to, mostly easy to define. Commercial takes on a nuance when you, I'm a landlord, or the Airbnb, or what's a duplex? What's a quad? What's an apartment complex? Is that residential or commercial? And we ran into, we... Is that residential or commercial? And we ran into, uh, we, excuse me, we, we ran into, uh, Ms. Kelly Leisure with Legal, who said, you're getting into all these zoning things that, um, have to be parsed out, because you run into single-family co- uh, versus multifamily and all this kinda stuff. And so we said, okay, never mind, punt. That's why it's in your lap, not ours. Our emphasis was in that we believe there should be some distinction between a property owner that's a homeowner versus, and I'm doing air quotes on purpose, because we did it actually on, on the board, residential versus commercial. Our intent was to say, there's gotta be some delineation, but we're not gonna try to figure that out.
Mr. Reese, I really appreciate your time on this and, um, the thoughtfulness, and letting me pick your brain on all these issues too, so thank you.
There's four hundred and ten man-hours stuck in my brain, so if you hear some rambling, sir, you understand why.
Thank you. Wait, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, so it's not quite done yet, Mr. Reese. I've got a couple more questions for you, and Wouldn, you may come up and be close to answer some of them. So I'm trying to make the math work in my head. So ultimately, the first part of y'all's recommendation is, and I think this goes to what Mr. Collins was saying, that the city's not a hundred percent responsible, homeowner's not a hundred percent responsible, we're looking somewhere in the middle.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's start with that. So what I'm looking at is last year, and Wouldn, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Atkinson, we, we guesstimated we repaired about a thousand of these last year. And so the cost, when we initially started talking about this, was eight hundred and nine hundred thousand, was when we-
Six hundred.
-when we s- put this out there, that if we didn't do any more, it'd be a savings for the city, which is then in turn a savings to the taxpayer.
Correct.
Just under a million. So we'll just say it's a thousand bucks per thing. Now, here's where my math is, and you might help me, Mr. Reese. Here's where my math is, I'm trying to figure this out. So when we're saying it's not a hundred percent on the city, not a hundred percent on the homeowner, we're trying to find this blended thing that benefits everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
Essentially what we're trying to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Is if you just did basic math and said, okay, the hu- the, the city's gonna subsidize twenty-five hundred dollars for each of those thousand-dollar repairs, that's two-point-five million. So that is quite a bit more. And we say city, and everybody has to understand, city means the taxpayer. The city has no money. The city is completely funded by anything that is from our citizens in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we proposing that we, how would, are we gonna come up with this additional money to subsidize all of these repairs, when, in essence, we aren't the city, the city is not gonna save any money, because Wood and Ms., you know, his entire department still has to maintain these crews, we're still gonna have to go out and repair asphalt and concrete, we're still gonna have to maintain, um, all of the equipment that we already own, that we were using for repairs. I'm trying to figure out how this, a- and I don't wanna use the word benefit, because it's not a benefit to anybody when we have to fix this. There's no benefit, other than we continue to provide health and safety for everybody. But if we were to switch to this, saying that this is a compromise, it's actually costing three times to the city what we would've already been paying, not including equipment, things that we already have to maintain. So there is no, i- it's gonna cost more. If you're just putting on the line of subsidy, it's a lot more. And I'm trying to figure out, where would that come from? Because we still have to maintain the equipment, I've, we've gotta maintain our crews, we're gonna have to pave the alleys, we're gonna have to do all of that. So maybe help me try to understand the math, where it comes in, that the homeowner's gonna have any responsibility in this, if the cost looks like it's three times extra.
Right. Let me, I'll, I'll punt in a little bit, we're using the word punt, back to Jeff on this one, uh, it's ultimate, but let me kinda define on where the city was. Um, so we had a capital project that had, rounding numbers off, a thousand per year, and they're costing a thousand dollars per year. So we had a million-dollar capital project. That capital project funded the materials and labor. It didn't account for any equipment, didn't account for any equipment, um, depreciation, it didn't account for overhead, the dispatchers that send those crews. Uh, we also had the discussion with the plumbers and, and the cost of, let's just add another crew. Well, a crew that we have is a crew that we use on more than just sewer laterals. It's a crew with a big truck, a whole, our equipment's much larger, because we want them to work on valves, we want them to work on fire hydrants, we want them to work on replacing and installing water and sewer mains throughout the city. So the cost and the capital costs of those are a little different. We had a lot of discussions on those, so what does it cost the city to do these? We just don't do our math that way and our bookkeeping that way, because we're not, we're not running a business for profit here at the city of Lovick. We do other things as well. So the thousand dollars was really just a capital project that we had that covered materials and labor. It didn't account for anything else that went on. The crew, uh, the committee also considered that if there's a subsidy given, whatever that is, and the committee recommended twenty-five hundred dollars, but whatever that is, that we're gonna have, our crews now freed up to go work on, on maintenance that we weren't working on. So there's a benefit there that's not calculated in that. We were asked what that benefit is. I can't put a number on that, I just, it's, there's, there's not a, there's not a number, but there is, while we're not over here working on sewer laterals, because we're, they're, they're recommending plumbers do that work, there is a benefit to the city to have my crews back doing maintenance. They are called pipeline maintenance, and we want them doing pipeline maintenance. So there's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of differences, you can't really compare a city crew to a plumber, that we had many, many hours of discussion. Um, and then so I'll punt it back to Jeff on how that, starting at a thousand dollars, which really wasn't a thousand dollars, and then they, they landed on twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, and I definitely understand the benefit of shifting our city crews around to be able to work on other things, like fire hydrants and lines. I'm looking, though, at the actual math of the money, so because you, we're not getting rid of our crew, right? The crew that has been currently working on these isn't going anywhere. It's not saving the taxpayer any money by eliminating a crew, 'cause a crew's just gonna work on a different project. We're not eliminating the equipment that we already pay for and maintain. So the cost, the, the actual frank, just brass tacks money cost was about a thousand for man, man-hours, who are already gonna maintain, and material.
Yes.
So if we just do subsidy cost, and we're, if we have a thousand of these come in next year, you're already gonna have to maintain your crew. We're not gonna recoup money. We're maybe shifting, shifting people, but not recouping money, but now we're spending two-point-five million-
Yes.
-from the city. And I'm trying to figure out in my brain, where we're gonna come up with two-point-five million of the taxpayers' money to subsidize these. So th- those are just questions. I'm running around, I'm, I know we are not making decisions here today. I know we are here to accept a report. I think there is a lot of things to consider when you have to look at this.
You're, you're right. The, the recommendations, if adopted as is, is an increase to our budget.
And we did discuss that, ma'am. We, we spent a lot of time actually discussing that. This has to be paid for somewhere.
I agree.
It had, so it needs to be done, it has to be paid for somewhere. Um, at the same time, fire hydrant maintenance should be, appear on a list.
Mm-hmm.
But much like our car, if I had to choose between putting a battery on or changing the oil, I'm gonna put the battery on, 'cause I gotta run the car. And so I keep deferring changing the oil. Eventually, that's a problem. And that was a big thing for the committee, was something's gotta change. We can't just stay where we are. So what does that mean? Well, we're gonna, somebody, the money's gotta come from somewhere to do this. And so we landed in this, we kept using the word hybrid, because the city has an interest and the property owner has an interest.
No, I, I agree. I think it's gonna have to be looked at pretty substantially to try to figure out, you know, where we don't cost the taxpayers extra money, versus what we can do to not make anybody be in financial burden. So one, I think one of the last questions I have is, I heard you mention when you were doing your, um, presentation, that you looked at what other cities are doing. What are other cities doing? Is there anybody that's similar to us, and what, how have they solved this problem?
I would summarize it by saying the majority put the burden on the property owner.
So what do they do? Did y'all look into that? Like, when a property owner can't afford to do this? What, do they have subsidy type of programs? I mean, how, what are they doing?
There were some low-income subsidy type things. Um, there is, uh, a specific insurance that we're, city partners with an insurance provider, and the ratepayer would see between five, six, seven dollars maybe per month, it's, it's an insurance to cover that. Um, we recognized those needs and said, okay, council, staff, we're gonna punt this to you. It is a need, and there's some opportunity to, to satisfy some of that.
That was one of the, at the very beginning of all these discussions that we started with, and we had a list of cities that we took to them. They went back and said, go find more. We wanna hear what more people are doing. So we have a spreadsheet, we have a list, and how we got that information, whether it's through the city's ordinance, or whether we spoke directly with their directors of, of their utilities, or whatever. And so we have that list and, and that program of the cities that require the prop- property owners to do it, or the cities that, city do it themselves, or those programs, and we can provide that information to you as well. Um, as you mentioned, we, we, I don't even wanna put numbers on it on top of my head, we went through a lot of cities and discussed with a lot of cities, the majority of them did punt, or did give it to the, the private property owners responsible for it. Again, not everybody, not every city's built the same way we are. Not every city has alleys, not every city, beaten city has development the way they are, so you gotta consider each individual city and how they are. And we talked through, ironically, we talked through each and every one of those cities, and, and why they do it, what, the way they do it, and how it's different. Um, so we can easily provide that information to you, and some of them did have, not necessarily, it was not, it was basically a homeowner's, additional homeowner's insurance program that you go through that covers this, that some of them are optional for the, for the property owner. So, simple spreadsheet that we can go ahead and provide to you, and provide more information if we need to, from a staff level.
Thank you.
As can be seen, this is still a work in progress. And I also wanna caution, because the public, I'm already receiving stuff in the mail, as probably most of us are, so I do want to caution them to be very careful, because this is still going to take some time before a final decision is made. But at this time, if there are no more questions, I'd like to call a motion to receive the report. Motion by David Glassheen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Brayden Rose. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen, for such a great and thorough process, and we look forward to, uh, continued work. With that, I would like to call this, or adjourn this meeting.